I'll call a regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order at 7:30. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Piatzou, and Alderman Laws will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us up, God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Gidge.
Here.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Milize Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have fifteen members present.
Also present, Mayor James Donches, and Corporation Counsel Stephen A. Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Well, first, I hope you enjoyed the presentation by V.O. Ride. I think they can provide a very interesting alternative, transportation alternative, for Nashua citizens as they said to no cost to Nashua taxpayers, except for the paying to ride the bikes for those who want to use them. We're trying to make the city more pedestrian and bike-friendly. I think this is a good step forward in doing that. V.O. Ride seems to be a very good match for Nashua, and so I think we can look forward to a fun summer with the bike sharing that can take place. Now, in concert with that, we might want to think about the resolution that is R. 1834, which is the acceptance of a grant in the amount of about $880,000 for the extension and completion of the rail trail going east from City Hall down all the way to the railroad tracks on East Hollis Street. That's like about a mile. This will enable, and the grant includes, the lighting of the trail with the same type of lighting that we have here on the west side of Main Street, going, obviously, in a western direction. This will enable a kind of a circuit of trails and river walks that people can walk or ride and get around, circulate around the city, especially when we consider that the new bridge, the pedestrian bridge, that will connect the rail trail down at the west end to, and cross over into Mine Falls Park, that should be completed in the fall. So I think we're making some great steps forward as far as creating new transportation, walking, biking, running options for people in the city. This Saturday, we have coming up Family Day at Holman Stadium. I hope as many people can make it as possible. The high school baseball players from both teams are going to conduct a clinic for any young kids who want to learn about baseball. They're going to have a home run derby, so we really appreciate their volunteering to do that. There will also be a family picnic and games at Holman Stadium for kids, and so it should be a good outing, and I hope you all can make it. Hopefully, the weather will be good. We, and I guess I will conclude by saying that we are going to be recognizing some people today that we want to thank very deeply. First, Mary Roy for her volunteer and her commitment to the good of Honduras and of the United States over a long, long period of time. When we get to that, I hope that Alderman Lopez will come up and read the resolution, or the resolution to her as we normally do, because he's been instrumental in pointing out all of the good work that Mary Roy has been doing for a long, long time. Also, we are going, the Gate City Light Award is being awarded by the mayor's volunteer recognition committee. That award is going to an organization that we all know very, very well, and which has been a very important institution in Nashua for a long time, since 1981 is the year, I believe. And that is the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter. They have, they are being recognized for all of the volunteer work that they have done, the leadership that they have provided in terms of providing food and meals to those who are hungry, as well as shelter to those who don't have it. So I really want to thank all of the members of the committee, that Sean Nelson and all members of the mayor's volunteer recognition committee, as well as Mike Renka, and all of the people who have put so much time, energy, blood, sweat, and tears, so to speak, into the Soup Kitchen and made it such a wonderful, important institution for Nashua. So I want to thank all the board members and volunteers who are here, and look forward to formally recognizing the Soup Kitchen. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Mr. President.
Are there any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period?
First, reading of Resolution 18-031, recognizing and congratulating Mary Roy.
If there are no objections, the rules will be so far suspended as to allow for a second reading of Resolution R. 1831.
Second reading of Resolution 18-031, recognizing and congratulating Mary Roy.
Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18031, recognizing Mary Roy.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1831. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1831 is adopted. Alderman Lopez, would you and the mayor like to present the award?
Whereas, Mary Roy's life changed in 1993, when she took a giant step out of her comfort zone, which resulted in her life being changed forever. She could have never expected what would come of the literal and figurative needs of faith. 1993 was the first year she spent ten days serving in the Olancho Honduras. Whereas, for twenty-five years, her extreme love and dedication to the people of Honduras and the mission of her team and the Olancho Foundation have become the driving forces in her life. Perpetuating her mission over the past twenty-five years has been no easy feat, but one that she is extremely passionate about. In those many years, she has facilitated donations of more than thirty tons of supplies, including medical, educational, and dental items. She has helped to paint schools and churches, build water treatment plants, and provide basic medical care for approximately 2,500 people. She has touched the hearts and the minds of countless people, and has helped see incredible changes to the face of education in the Department of Olancho. Whereas, Mary was recently honored by the Olancho Foundation with a room dedicated in her honor at the Espaleta Nazarete, commemorating her twenty-five years of volunteer service, bringing teams to Honduras to help youth and families. Whereas, as a mother of four, grandmother of twelve, and great-grandmother of two, she has always been dedicated to her family and her work in her parish community. She is a naturally giving person and someone who has a strong connection with her faith. She has taught Sunday School, volunteered to run the kitchen of church events, worked at blood drives, spent time with the elderly, and counseled parishioners who have experienced a loss. She has used her experience with Third World culture to promote social justice and to help others understand that no matter what we, no matter what, we are all brothers and sisters, and we need to care for each other, no matter where we live. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Aldermen, the City of Nashua, that the mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the City of Nashua recognize and congratulate Mary Roy for her volunteerism, kindness, empathy, and generous spirit, for efforts bringing pride to our family and to our citizens.
First reading of Resolution 18-032, recognizing the Nashua Soup Kitchen and the Shelter with the 2018 Gate City Light Award.
If there are no objections, the rules will be so far suspended as to allow for a second reading of Resolution R. 1832.
Second reading of Resolution 18-032, recognizing the Nashua Soup Kitchen and the Shelter with the 2018 Gate City Light Award.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you, I move for final passage of Resolution 1832.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1832. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1832 is adopted. Alderman Wiltshire and Mayor Donches.
Resolution, recognizing the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter, 2018 Gate City Light Award. Whereas, the mayor's volunteer recognition committee, who made sponsor the new City Light Award, commend the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter and its volunteers for generously sharing their time in the spirit of community and giving. Whereas, the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter volunteers serve the communities in daily food preparation, assisting with meal service and other services to hundreds of clients each day. The volunteers serve during weekdays, weekends, and holidays, knowing that no member of our community should go hungry, regardless of the day or time of year. Additionally, volunteers support annual fundraising events to strengthen the impactful work within the City of Nashua. Whether standing or co-storing any of the annual Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter five K, preparing one seventy thousand meals annually, hitting up over a thousand turkeys before Thanksgiving, or leading the charge to bring school backpacks to children in our city, the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter has volunteered to support the Nashua community with dignity and excellence. Whereas, these volunteers serve the community year-round in countless ways. The energy of the volunteers is continuous and lasting for the Nashua community. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Nashua, that the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter and its volunteers be recognized, thanked, and applauded for their vital contributions to the well-being of Nashua residents, as well as for their dedication to the Nashua community, and be presented with the 2018 Gate City Light Award.
the report, the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of April 23rd, April 24th, and April 30th, 2018, will be accepted, placed on file, and the readings will be suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
There are none.
Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Mr. Teboom.
Hello, my name is Fatima Teboom. I reside at 24 Diane. It's the first time I've appeared here with the new board. One of the faces, I recognize, almost another. But I want to talk about 18024, which deals with funding for the Performing Arts Center. Yes, it's going to be planned, planned to be placed up there, or by August 22nd. Could I ask, Chair, how much money have you collected so far, planned donations?
I think it's important to understand, and I was going to bring this up when the legislation came up, this legislation does not have to do with the endowment fund for the arts. I misspoke at the public hearing when I explained it that way. This is a bill to create a special revenue fund for the acceptance of rents from the tenants who live in that building and expend that money for maintenance on the building.
That's why I'm here. That's correct. I noticed at the public hearing on the 23rd, and the Budget Committee meeting we'll be following on the 23rd, there's only one ultimate question, statement, that this will be, this funding created parking area for private funding was all for Jenny. It's the only one I need to note that. The only one I want to know, I think, on that resolution, because of that. The private donations must appear, shall appear. It's very difficult to hallucinate at this point, but private funding must be placed into a trust fund, established on RSA 3198. And the purpose of that is that the money cannot be fully mingled with any other funding.
Again, I'll state, the legislation has nothing to do with the acceptance of funds for the performing arts center. It is for the acceptance of rent money from people who live in the building.
Isn't that rent money to be used for?
No. This is a special revenue fund that allows us to maintain the building using the rent that we collect from it.
And what do you use that money for?
The maintenance of the building.
Maintenance of the building. Actually, it is not used to accumulate or holding part of those four million. That's the main part I'd like to make. Therefore, I'll make the only element of consciousness is the third element, all for Jenny. And some of the class of the performing arts center here, or if they think two or three of you did not notice that. It's a very important point, that many of us have tracked the four million. We don't want to see a four million coming in with any other company.
If you check the minutes of the April 25th Budget Review Committee, you'll see that that discussion was had to correct that on that evening.
Is that what happened? Have we been using the trust fund yet?
The trust fund, public hearing was, I believe, on the 23rd, and at, the day after that, the city attorney made me aware of the fact that we had mischaracterized it. That error was corrected at the Budget Committee on the meeting of the 25th.
Correct. Not on the Budget meeting, I'm sorry.
Correct.
I presume the trust fund is going to be established? I have not seen a resolution for trust fund.
Neither have I.
Is that, is that in the works? Are we going to expect it in the next agenda?
If it is necessary, it will be created.
If you're going to track four million dollars for private funding, you must create a trust fund.
If the city is going to collect the four million dollars, that is correct.
I thought the four million was subject to debate.
It's not, I'm not going to debate this, and it's not the subject that's in front of the board now.
You have to get this straightened out.
Communications requiring final approval.
There are none.
Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
Reports of committees. If there are no objections, the reports of the Budget Committee of April 23rd, April 25th, April 30th, May 1st, and May 3rd, 2018, will be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments.
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution 18-022, authorized from the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,500,000 for the fiscal year 2018 SOAR infrastructure program.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18022 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1822 by roll call. Is there any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Milize Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have fifteen ayes.
Motion carries, and R. 1822 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-023, changing the purpose of up to 514,000 of unexpended bond proceeds for various wastewater projects to the fiscal year 2018 SOAR infrastructure program.
Alderwoman Maluzi Golia.
Yes, I would move for final passage of R. 18023 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1823 by roll call. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Milize Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have fifteen ayes.
Motion carries, and Resolution R. 1823 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-024, creating a special revenue fund for the 201 Main Street Building.
Alderwoman Wiltshire.
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution 1824.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1824. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Chair.
Alderman Jettie.
Just because it's been brought up, I did want to say that there was some misunderstanding initially about this resolution, but it was clarified, and as you pointed out, you clarified that this resolution is solely for the purpose of collecting the rent money that people are paying in the building. The building currently has tenants. They are paying rent, and this special fund is solely to collect that rent and to maintain the building. The issue of the four million dollar endowment has not been dealt with yet, and I can assure people that Attorney Bolton and the president have made it clear that that type of fund, you know, would be a trust fund, as Mr. Teboom has pointed out, but it hasn't, that ball hasn't started rolling yet, but I imagine it will be coming up soon. And so my objections at the committee meeting have been resolved, and now that it's been clarified what this is for, I will be voting for it.
Any further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
In, receiving the clarification about what the fund was for as well, and residents, I had asked, I think, last year, of the mayor's office, if there was a plan for those residents, given that they may not want to be living in a performing arts center. And there, it was indicated to me that there would be some support given to them in terms of helping them locate new residences if it was necessary, but the performing arts center as a reality is pretty far off, so it shouldn't affect their current leases. They shouldn't be worried about now suddenly they have a new landlord and maybe they're going to be moved out.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1824 is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Ordnance 18-012, amending the fee schedule of the city building regulations.
Alderwoman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to RSA 47:26, a public hearing on O-18012, amending the fee schedule of the city building regulations, be scheduled for Wednesday, May 30th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chambers.
Motion is that pursuant to RSA 47:26, a public hearing on O-1812, amending the fee schedule of the city building regulations, be scheduled for Wednesday, May 30th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution 18-033, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $1,430,000, excuse me, $1,430,000 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development into public and health community service grant activity, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HFWA.
Additional sponsors, Alderwoman Maluzi Golia, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tenza, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Karen, Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Cle, Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright. Did I miss anybody? And R. 18033 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-034, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of transportation enhancement funds from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation in the amount of $879,760 in authorizing the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors, Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Milize Golia, Alderwoman Schmidt, and Alderman O'Brien. And R. 18034 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-035, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $30,001 from Renaissance Downtown's LLC into Public Works Capital Project Activity, East Hollis Street Gateway Improvements Project.
Additional sponsors, Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. And R. 1835 will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works. New business ordinances?
There are none.
Period for general public comment. No one has signed up. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen. I'll start over here. Alderwoman Maluzi Golia.
First of all, I have spoken to Alderwoman Karen, but just apologies for not being at the senior center event. I had a conflict, but I understand it was a successful event, so congratulations. And on the same evening, the Nashua Fire Rescue was having their awards and recognition dinner, and Alderman Jettie, Alderman Dowd, and I were in attendance, and I know other members of the Board of Aldermen also had a conflict and were unable to be there. But I would just like to congratulate all of the firefighters who received awards and who were promoted, and also to acknowledge the efforts of our citizens who were involved in some pretty amazing lifesaving activities in helping put out fires and keeping our public safe. So thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Next Monday, the Ward Five Town Hall meeting hosted by the mayor will occur at 7:00 PM at the main Dunstable School, so invite all Ward Five constituents, including yourself, Mr. President, and Alderman Large Kelly, to come, and the citizens are invited to come and express their concerns and ask questions and hear a report from the mayor and the Alderman. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
This goes back a little bit, but I just wanted to thank everyone who was involved in the Earth Day event. The mayor came out, and we had quite a few kids come out. Shout out to Adriana Lopera, who did a really great craft with them, and everybody had a lot of fun. It was a beautiful day.
Alderwoman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I too would like to thank those members of the Board of Aldermen who attended the senior center's annual fundraiser. It looked like...
It looked like this year the chefs really got involved. The theme was tropical, and there was one table, I think it was Corville and another nursing home, they were actually dressed as pirates. The food was phenomenal, and it looks like, hopefully, we have made our goal for the first time to make fifty thousand dollars for our senior center, which will go a long way to open up for nighttime programs and what have you, so I appreciate that. But on another note, I'd like to send out my condolences to the Mignot family, Chubby Mignot, who worked for Public Works for over thirty years, passed away unexpectedly last week, and I know he'll be sorely missed by his friends and neighbors, and my husband knew him since he was a little kid, not only when they worked together, so our condolences to the Mignot family. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I would also want to pass condolences to the Mignot family. I know some of their neighbors were particularly touched by his life, so additionally, this Thursday, there is, there's the Sculpture Symposium, which I'm sure everybody is aware of and planning to attend, the opening, but there's also the Bridges to Hope fundraiser, to benefit Bridges, right over here on East Hollis, they're neighbors to our Gate City Light recipients, the Nashua Soup Kitchen, so I'd encourage people to consider attending that as well. And then on June ninth, we're having the Tree Streets Block Party. As last year, we're having our Best Rice on the Block Rice Tasting Competition, representing multiple restaurants from around the community, their own particular flavor of rice, just to taste and see who's got the best rice on the block. We have a whole number of performance activities being organized. We have local band favorites, a live art battle, a lot of nonprofits, over twenty-two so far, registered to run fair events and carnival activities and that kind of stuff. So it should be a really good opportunity to see the Tree Streets at their best, it's going to be on Ash Street from two to six on June ninth.
Alderwoman Wilshire.
My condolences also to the Mignot family, Chubbs was, he was a great guy, great guy. I also want to commend all the Nashua Fire Rescue employees who received awards last week, I was unable to attend, and congrats on the goal for the Nashua Senior Center, that's awesome. I know you work really hard, Alderman Karen, on that, so congrats to that. And Mary Roy, what a spectacular woman she is, she is really amazing, everything she's done for twenty-five years, just trying to make other people's lives better, phenomenal lady. And also my congrats to Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter, they do fabulous work, I can't even express it enough, how strongly I feel about the work that organization does, they are awesome. So, that's it, thank you.
I would express my condolences to the Mignot family as well, I've known Chubbs at least as long as I've been on this board, which is a while, and he's a, considered him a good friend, and he'll be missed. I'd like to extend my apologies to the firemen for not having attended the award ceremony because I was at the senior center fundraiser, given awards or food. Lastly, I know Alderman Lopez mentioned it, but I wanted to make sure everybody knew about the opening reception for the Sculpture Symposium, which is at the airport from six to eight P M. on Thursday. It's a, it, it's a great event, and the symposium itself produces new public art for Nashua every year. This year promises to give some spectacular pieces that may be in very prominent locations, so if you can make it and support that, please do. The symposium will be held at Make It Labs, so while it's in progress over the next few weeks, if you want to stop down during the day and see the sculptors work, they will be there. Committee announcements, Alderwoman Wilshire.
Thank you. Human Affairs will meet on Monday, the fourteenth, at seven P M. here in the chambers.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, tomorrow evening, we're going to have our final division come before the Budget Committee, and that will be the School Department. It's obviously the largest piece of the budget. And then on the seventeenth of this month, we will be having our public hearing at Nashua High School North, so just wanted to let everybody know that. And then following the public hearing, we will be having wrap-up sessions, and I'll explain more about that tomorrow night.
Further announcements, Alderwoman Melizzi Golia.
P E D C next Tuesday at seven P M.
Alderman Lopez.
In the, in my Aldermanic remarks to inform the public, we have an Employment Connect Job Fair event tomorrow at the Nashua Public Library, and I encourage anybody who's looking for employment to attend. The employers that are attending are focused on meeting eye-to-eye, face-to-face with people, and making that in-person connection. So it'll be at Nashua Public Library, the Job Fair event is ten thirty to one thirty, and then there's job preparation ahead of time where different supportive agencies will be there on hand to help you spruce up your presentation, any last-minute resume tweaks that you need, make sure that you're able to walk into the Job Fair as competitive as possible.
Further announcements? If not, Alderman Wilshire.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we are adjourned at eight oh six.